This work session of the, oh, okay. I usually do the check in, so we're streaming live to the community and we're ready to go on the staff side, correct? Okay, I will call it to order. This work session of the Westland City Council. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Happy September, everybody. Happy belated Labor Day. And the first item of business is, as always, to approve our wonderful agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for the Westland City Council September 2nd work session.
Second.
It has been moved second to approve the agenda for the September 2nd City Council work session. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can call the roll for the only time tonight.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealstoski?
Yes. Thank you. And Counselor Groner is excused for now, and if he comes on, hopefully, maybe we can try to reach him and see if he's trying to get in or where he's at. I know he's out of town in New Jersey for the next couple of days. The next item of business is public comments. And we can call up the first speaker. Now, we have a couple today.
Our first public comment is from Monica Dainard. And Monica, are you online? Do you need to unmute?
Yes, yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Hi, Monica. Welcome. Just state your name and city residence for the record, and you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica with a K, Dainard. And thank you for including me this afternoon. While I am not, while Westland is not my primary residence, and I do not vote in Westland, my husband does, and I spend at least five months a year here. I live in Minneapolis. I returned to Minneapolis from Westland in 2021 to establish my daughter at university, to get treatment for my advanced-stage breast cancer, and to care for my mother who passed away in 2024. Before her death, my mother had many ideas about how we might bring some joy to our mutual lives, including allowing our dear cat to have kittens and to raise them and to buy a golf cart, to visit with friends and family in the neighborhood. But sadly, she died before the kittens were born and before the snow melted, and I was able to buy her a golf cart. I am grateful she was able to leave me a tiny bit of money with which I might buy a golf cart. This past year, which I was able to buy a golf cart in 2024 and give it to my husband for Father's Day. This past year has been delightful, and while I'm not cured, I am worse. We have had many pleasant visits with neighbors. We have been very active, taking the cart up for tennis and to the hardware stores. I have come to understand that this summer had seen a bit of a crackdown on our golf cart enthusiasm, and I hope we can get some understanding as to why and to see what we might do to adjust or adopt any ordinances and allow for golf carts in the Willamette neighborhood. I have heard, whether my life be long or short, I have learned that I know I have much more fun traveling around in a golf cart. Thank you.
Monica, thank you for your, sharing your thoughts with us, and we hear you on the golf cart issue, and we will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Fearing.
Hi, Steve, welcome. We received your email testimony as well.
I just. You had the golf course.
I know, it's been a while. Just make sure your microphone's on and state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
Okay, I also submitted a draft ordinance that I don't know if any of you have received, but it's there for you. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Steve Fearing, and I'm here representing many of our neighbors in the Willamette community. I've lived here 15 years. I'm a retired high school teacher from Cambie High School and also a veteran. Thank you for taking the time to hear not only my opinion and suggestions on this issue, but also many neighbors in the Westland, specifically Willamette community. At the most recent Old Time Fair parade, 10 of us were more registered to be in the parade and as the golf cart community and some as the wetlands community. We won a first-place blue ribbon in our category. Some of our concerns and reasons for creating an ordinance for our community are as follows. Many towns across the United States, including across Oregon, have approved and operate under such similar ordinance. Also, it can reduce traffic congestion as well as parking issues. There's less exhaust fumes. It's safer alternative walking through narrow streets and steep roads, and there's less street noise. It allows people with walking challenges to attend events and local businesses. I'm aware of an ordinance for the city of Westland that allows for other electric bicycles, motorized vehicles, scooters, et cetera. It was also printed in the Westland tidings article and that explained the laws and practices needed to comply with the ordinance. How my partner and I got involved this year was because we have noticed a growing population of low-speed vehicles and carts throughout the community downtown, on the streets, and at Willamette Park events. Some carried kayaks, some carried paddleboards, coolers, and such. We decided to join the group by purchasing a two-year-old low-speed vehicle from a member of the Clackamas County Sheriff Department, whose family lived in Kaiser, and they would every year, every summer, go to Detroit, where there's a larger golf cart community. I also have an example of their ordinance from Detroit, as well as Manzanita. We've enjoyed being in the parade with our five-year-old twin granddaughters with seatbelts, of course, giving tours to our friends and relatives who have never seen all that Willamette has to offer as our community has grown and become more and more popular. I want to thank you once again for this opportunity and hope you consider this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And I'll just share, so a public comment is a time for folks to bring stuff to us. We can't really take an action during the public comment time, but in the recent past, we've had several issues that have come up like this with requesting ordinances, and so then we kind of take it under advisement. We can study the issue, put a work session agenda if a majority of the council would like, and then start the process of reviewing the issue with golf carts, if the council would like to. So we will discuss that soon and get back to you and the community.
Thank you.
And thank you for your testimony and providing the draft ordinance as well. Anyone else?
Nope, no more comment.
Okay. Well, the next item of business is reports from community advisory groups under the mayor and council reports. I'll also say reports from community, reports from city business in general. Anybody have anything to report from the month off that we had? Counselor Bright, please go ahead.
It wasn't as much of a month off as I thought. I attended the utility advisory board meeting on August 12th and the planning commission meeting on August 20th, and then also attended the Robinwood Neighborhood Association picnic on August 23rd. We had a pretty good turnout in spite of the heat.
Thank you for that. Counselor President?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I also attended the meetings for the Willamette Falls locks, at which we discussed next steps for funding as the requested funds were not approved in the recent legislative session. But we have a plan, so our lobbyist Doug Riggs reported, and we discussed that. The Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition August meeting was canceled, and the Willamette Falls Trust will not have a meeting, but instead is having a retreat at the end of the month, which I will be attending at the Yumitilla Casino and Hotel. And next, in a week and a half, I will be also representing leaders, women leaders at a canoe paddle in British Columbia, which I'm very excited about. And that is all.
That's awesome.
Other than attending various neighborhood picnics as well.
Yes, great picnics this past month. I can, would you like me to go next, or would you like to? You go ahead, you can report. Counselor Bonnington?
Yeah, back on the 17th of August was the Sunset Neighborhood Picnic, and that had a fantastic turnout. That was really nice to see. And then the only other thing I can think back to was the EDC meeting on the 7th, but that was just a Vision 43 update, and I think we all know that by heart now, so.
Awesome. Well, I got the opportunity to be on the Mayor Monday segment on Coin Six yesterday and discuss our city's waterfront planning efforts and the transportation package, so we'll get that link out to the community in our newsletter. And I will just share that on the transportation package, I testified at the hearing last week at the request of our state senator, and the bill passed the House, and it's heading to the Senate for a vote tomorrow. And that, if that bill passes, it would result in some revenue increases to the city because the city gets 20% of gas tax and vehicle registration fee revenues for use in our road maintenance fund. So that is of significance to the city and also to the public, and it's been interesting to hear all the valid perspectives on both sides of that issue, and wishing legislators luck as they navigate the process. So that was my update. And I also started law school in August, so working, doing that as well, as a part-time student at Lewis and Clark. So I'll be engaged in many processes over the next, multiple issues with law school and city. So with that, anything else to report from the city council? Anything come up? Okay, we'll move on to the proclamation then, which is National Preparedness Month, and I will read it. Whereas disasters occur in human life, some man-made and some as a result of our environment, and whereas some natural disasters are unpredictable in nature, such as the much-anticipated Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, whereas others are becoming more frequent and severe as our climate changes, and whereas we face longer wildfire seasons, more severe droughts, heavier rainfall, and more frequent flooding, and whereas one way we can respond to the unpredictable and severe nature of natural disasters and emergencies is to be prepared to respond to them, and whereas there are simple but important steps we can all take to ensure we know what to do and have what we need in the event of an emergency, and whereas one simple step is for households to assemble disaster supplies and make a plan to reconnect after tragedy, and whereas each of us can do our part to prepare for emergencies and help our neighbors and others affected by disasters. So therefore, the city council of the city of Westland joins others in this nation to observe the month of September once again as National Preparedness Month. We encourage Westland residents to promote family and community disaster preparedness now and throughout the year. We pray tribute to the courageous individuals who rush to the scene of disaster and respond to catastrophic emergencies for their dedication to our safety, and we honor them with our renewed commitment to ourselves, be prepared and be as prepared and self-resilient as we possibly can be. So thank you, and I now need to go assemble my emergency kit for the earthquake as a result of the proclamation. We do that at my house, and I encourage everybody else to do the same. So no more proclamations, so moving right along. We have Greg Geist here and Alexandra from the Water Environmental Services District, and they're going to, at least Greg's going to come up and give the presentation.
Please. All right, thank you, Mayor. City councilors, my name's Greg Geist. I'm the director of Clackamas Water Environment Services, and I've been here every year for the, I have five or six years now, giving what we, kind of an annual report or a state of the state. So that's what we're going to do today. For those maybe watching that don't know who we are or what we do, we are a special district that provides sewer services for six cities and unincorporated Clackamas County, about 190,000 residents. And basically, we take what goes down your toilet, your sink, your shower, your dishwasher, and we do, make three things. We make clean water that goes back out to the river. We make electricity that we use to help power the facility, our treatment facility, and we make a natural fertilizer called biosolids that's utilized out in eastern Oregon for farm fields. We are a water resource recovery facility. Oh, I'm ready. All right. Oh, I think I went too far. There we go. So I wanted to focus, I'm not going to read our whole mission, but our vision is to be a collaborative partner in building a resilient, clean water future where all people benefit and rivers thrive. We've been really dedicated to that mantra for several years now. I hope that you've seen it in practice, and I hope city staff have seen it in practice. It's really something that we're incorporating, I guess is the word, into our organization. Basically, again, for those that aren't familiar, it's our job to protect public health, support the vitality of our communities, natural environment, and economy. Few numbers here to share. It's a little slow. Yeah, go ahead. This is our service area. Like I said, we serve six different cities. We actually provide a variety of services from wastewater treatment, which we do for Westland, which I'm going to focus on today, but in some areas, we provide the conveyance and collection of wastewater that ultimately gets to our wastewater treatment plants, and we also have a really robust surface water management program, control stormwater, stream habitat restoration, those types of activities across the county. We actually have five water resource recovery facilities. Our flagship facility there in Oregon City that serves Westland, as well as a facility called Kellogg Creek in Milwaukee, and then three other small satellite facilities across the county. We treat collectively over 7 billion gallons of wastewater per year. So that's 7 billion gallons that goes down a toilet, a sink, a shower that we turn into clean water. And many, many hundreds of miles of pipe in the ground and pump stations that collect and convey that treatment or that waste. Very broadly, for every ratepayer dollar, 62% goes to O and M, operations and maintenance, 9% to debt payments, and 29% to what we call infrastructure financing. That's building stuff. Specifically to Westland, we're proposing, well, we're committed to reasonable and predictable rate increases over time. Rate shock is something that we want to avoid at all costs, and I think we've done a really good job building a strong foundation that's going to keep us that reasonable, predictable rate increase for the foreseeable future. No surprises. So for 2526, it's a 4.9% increase or $1.45 a month, about 18 bucks a year. And I want to touch on why we think we can do that consistently. When we formed the West 190 Partnership back in 2016, it essentially consolidated three different service districts and allowed us to do the type of long planning that's necessary. We build infrastructure that goes 50, 100 years lifespan, and we needed to be able to look out into the future and have certainty that we knew what we were going to build, when we needed to build it, and how we're going to pay for it. And so we started with master planning, looking at our collection system, looking at all of our facilities, looking at our stormwater infrastructure out 20, 40, 50 years, both on the condition needs as well as future needs. And then we brought that back in-house. We developed a long-term capital plan, so what we needed to build and when we need to build it, as well as a long-range financial plan that tells us how we're going to pay for it. So you put all those things together, assuming we made good assumptions and we can reasonably see what's coming down the pipe in the future, we do know what we need to build, when we need to build it, and how we're going to pay for it, and that we can do it with reasonable and predictable rate increases, which frankly, for those that are familiar with utilities across Oregon and across the country, is a very, very fortunate place to be in. Excellent. But now I'll start talking about some projects that I think are important to Westland, in particular, our Clackamole project. So this is a large outfall project that we're in the midst of right now. We're mostly done. We're done with the hard part, but we're still working on it. Yeah, I have a short video to show on that.
The Tri-City Resource Recovery Facility Outfall Project is a vital step forward in protecting water quality in the region. Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, launched this project to expand outfall capacity and ensure compliance with Oregon water quality standards and federal requirements, while benefiting the river, the community, and the environment. The new system will provide greater dilution and reduced discharge concentrations by relocating the primary outfall to a deeper section of the river. It's also equipped with a multi-port diffuser to provide rapid dilutions that help protect water quality year-round. By moving the discharge point farther from the Clackamas River, the project helps preserve seasonal cold water refuges crucial for fish and aquatic life. Other benefits include enhancing the protection of beneficial uses in the Willamette River, maintaining nearshore and offshore fish passage, minimizing construction impacts by using trenchless methods beneath the riverbed, and installing an integrated outfall system that includes a new 90-inch diffuser with 18 risers while retaining the existing 72-inch outfall for peak wet weather events. Altogether, it's a comprehensive solution for long-term environmental health. Designing the alignment for the outfall was a complex challenge. The project had to work within the footprint of the old Rossman landfill and avoid existing critical utilities along Agnes Avenue, and deal with poor ground conditions, all while minimizing disruption to public infrastructure and private property. It crossed several key areas like Agnes Avenue, Main Street, Interstate 205 and its ramps, Highway 99, Clackamote Drive, and John Storm Park, which required a special easement. Wes worked closely with stakeholders, including local residents, property owners, the city of Oregon City, and ODOT to limit construction impacts. The alignment used a combination of methods. About half was open cut along Agnes Road. The other half-mile section was constructed using microtunneling, launched from a 28-foot deep shaft and ending in the Willamette River. Challenging soil conditions required a specially-designed microtunnel boring machine imported from Germany. And as is common on tunneling industry projects, Wes promoted a contest for naming the tunnel boring machine, with the community selecting the name Clackamole. Construction kicked off in July 2024 with the excavation of the 28-foot launch shaft. By the end of August, Clackamole was launched, slowly advancing underground by cutting through the soil and pushing pipe segments forward with hydraulic jacks and lubrication systems. To avoid disrupting John Storm Park and the riverbank, the tunnel includes both vertical and horizontal curves. Tunneling was completed by December 2024. In January 2025, the tunnel was cleaned out and flooded. Then, using a crane on a barge, the boring machine was lifted from the bottom of the river, disassembled, and shipped back to Germany. Meanwhile, open-cut installation along Agnes Avenue began in May 2024. Over the course of a year, crews connected the new pipe to the Tri-City Treatment Facility and prepared it for integration with the tunnel. The final step was installing the diffuser in the Willamette River. Scheduled for completion between July and October 2025, the diffuser will feature 18 risers. Though the main outfall pipe is buried below the riverbed, the risers, equipped with tide flex valves and breakaway joints to protect the main diffuser pipe, will extend slightly above it, enabling rapid mixing of treated water with river flows. Once complete, the new outfall and diffuser will serve as the primary discharge point for the Tri-City Treatment Facility, ensuring clean water in the Willamette River for generations to come.
So before I talk about that, I forgot to mention one thing I thought was important on the financial side. So we charge a Westland resident $30.75 a month, or we will this fiscal year. And what we do with that, we have three large pump stations near the Willamette River. We convey the wastewater that comes from all those households, either under the river or over the river, and we treat it, and we send it back out to the river clean. And I think that's a pretty darn good deal. Anyway, on the Clackamole project, we are in the river right now, installing those diffusers, and we're on time and on budget, unlike some other projects in the vicinity. That was a $58 million project. And that will provide. That will provide service through about 2080. Next project I want to talk about is our Willamette Pump Station and Forest Main project. So essentially, this pump station was installed, it's down by the old Blue Heron Lagoons. It was put online in 1985, 86, and it needs to be both expanded and moved. It's physically constrained by the size of the building for future, to accept future growth. It's in the floodplain. It flooded in 1996, and it's just time to upgrade it. And so what we're doing is we're building a new pump station just to the north of the existing pump station, and we're going to decommission this pump station or remove it when we're done. We're actively working on the design of that project now. We're going to do the pipeline, the Forest Main, so from that location all the way to essentially the I-205 bridge, we're going to be expanding the pressurized pipe that conveys wastewater to our treatment plant. We're also, I believe, in near term, getting our, we're hanging a new pipe or a, yeah, a new pipe on the I-205 bridge as part of the Abernathy project. Right now, the waste goes across the arch bridge, but there's not room to expand there. Oh, and so we're going to be having, we recognize their sensitivity in that area. We want to be good neighbors. We have a Willamette Neighborhood Association presentation at 7:00, September 10th, at the Westland Adult Community Center to talk to the community about the project and what we're doing. I'd wanted to emphasize that we are not going to be impacting the wetlands there. We have a DEQ-approved wetland plan for that project. I think those are the major talking points on that. Yeah, that's it. Next slide. One thing, if you, a lot of people walk around the Blue Heron Lagoons and by our pump station there. I don't know if you've noticed, but we actually put a, we have trash service there. We have a trash can so people can put their dog waste and other things in there, just, again, trying to be a good neighbor. If you walk in that area today, you will see noise monitoring equipment that's mounted there. We're going to be monitoring that for probably a few weeks, the purpose being that we don't want to contribute, have our new pump station contribute to noise pollution there. So that's what you can see going on at the site today. There are a lot more going on in the near future. Next slide. Oh, shoot. Most of, actually, I think all of you, maybe except for Counselor Bonnington, have taken tours of our facility. Have you? Okay, well, you're welcome to. And if, over the last three years, we've been doing this pretty significant rehabilitation project for our, what we call our primary clarifiers, which is a major component of our treatment train, full rehabilitation of all the concrete and all the mechanical equipment. We're wrapping that up at the end of this construction season. Future projects that we're going to be working on, if folks remember, the Aeration Basins, kind of where the magic happens, we're going to be doing a complete renovation of those in the near future with new instrumentation and controls and monitoring, with the idea of making it easier, more efficient to, for operators to operate, and also more energy-efficient. We can use less electricity. Next project, or next slide. Another one that's a major project that we're going to be having coming up in the next few years is our Influent Pump Station. If you look at the picture on the left and you recall from the tour, we have pumps that are down in, well, the dry side of the wet well with drive shafts that connected up, you know, four stories or so up to the drive motors. We're going to be putting in all-new equipment, all-new pumps, all-new drive motors, all-new switchgear controls. That'll be completely upgraded soon and expanded for additional capacity in the future. And again, those have been online since 1986, when the plant was commissioned. They've been, there's been various upgrades over the years, but this is a big one. Next slide. Energy conservation. At Wes, our mantra around energy is use. Energy conservation. At Wes, our mantra around energy is use less and make more. Two or three years ago now, we brought online a new system, I'll just say, that allows us now to produce about 40% of the energy that we can consume at that facility. And it's a large industrial facility. We have a million-dollar-a-year power bill between there and our Kellogg facility. So every little bit helps. Every project that we do, engineering or otherwise, we run through PGE Energy Trust and have that filter for energy efficiency. Also, we do things like strategic energy management, which is a no-cost program through Energy Trust where we go on energy-saving treasure hunts. And this year, we were able to realize a 4.1% energy reduction, enough to power 12 homes for a year, and we got a nice incentive check for $44,000 for that. Next slide. And I just want to always, you know, talk about partnering with Westland. We love to be out in the community, talking about who we are, what we do, and why we matter to the community, and sponsoring and attending community events is one of the main ways that we do that in Westland, Oregon City, and Gladstone. Movies in the park, music in the park. This year, we're adding concerts in the park. We can both get some of our messaging out there, get our brand out there, and talk to people about what we do. Also, old-time fair parade sponsor again. Oh. And then I just wanted to thank folks, Mayor Bill Stosky, Council President Baumgartner. Oh, you know, I also forgot to mention how we're structured. You guys all know, but for the public, we are governed by the Board of County Commissioners, but we have a very active and engaged 20-member advisory committee. Carol Breck is on our, the elected representative from Westland, and Greg DiLoreto is our chair of our committee and a Westland resident, and frankly, a luminary in the water business, nationally-recognized expert. So we're happy to have him. Oh, yeah, and then John and Eric were there too. Thank you, John and Eric. I think I want to end on, you know, we're very proud of what we do for Westland, and we think we do a pretty good job. And I'm not saying this, or sharing this to toot our own horn, but we're a member of the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, which is over 100 agencies or cities and service districts that do what we do. Salem, Portland, Gresham, Bend, Ashland, any city of any size across the state. And we won the Member Agency of the Year Award, both in 2019 and again this year in 2025. And that, I think, speaks to the commitment and integrity of the Wes staff and our commitment to continual improvement and serving the community. And it's a good time to be the Wes director, I'll just say that. As always, anybody that would like to take a tour, I'll give a tour to anybody, anytime, or any number of people. So keep that in mind. And I will leave it with, I did bring copies of our annual report that I'll leave with staff, our strategic plan, and our budget document. And Councilor Breck will attest to the fact that this is an amazing, this has everything you need to know about Wes, who we are, what we're up to, what our priorities are. Our finance director or manager, Aaron Blue, is fantastic. So I highly recommend that you take a look at this. And then I'm going to leave you with just a little token gift. Last, a few months ago, we did an employee appreciation event. We had ping-pong contests. We also had a puzzle contest. So we had teams of two people that would see how fast they could do a puzzle. The puzzle was aerial shot of our Tri-City, which was our recovery facility, and my team got second. Very proud of that. So I don't know if you guys have a lunchroom or, there's a puzzle in our lunchroom that's kind of an ongoing thing, so if you wanted.
Thank you. Who's going, yeah, who's going to get the puzzle now? Everybody in the room, Eric's back there too, he might want it.
In a communal area.
What was the winning time?
I don't recall, but there were two ringers ahead of us. And luckily, my partner was good and I wasn't.
You didn't bring the wipe in the bottle this year. I remember that from a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
That's still, it's not degraded yet, has it?
No, no.
I remember that. That was a good prop.
Wipes aren't flushable, although there has been, I can leave on that too. There has been progress. There's some international and national certifications now that do assure that flushable wipes are flushable. And you can get the, I won't name the brand, but you can get them at Costco. Look for the little toilet label on them.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Greg, and Alexa. Sorry, I butchered your name earlier. I just wanted to say that.
Oh, no.
And you have some other staff here too. Would you like to introduce your team that you've got in the audience?
Ron Wieringa, the deputy director, Jeff Stahler, our capital program manager. He's the one that gets everything built. Alexa Morris, she's our, and I always get this wrong, our utility relations coordinator. I want to say manager, but.
That was a really nice video too that you had with, from the project. Very exciting.
We expect to get multiple awards for that project. Jeff has been talking to Oregon Association, gave a presentation at the conference this year. He's going to give a presentation to the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association and at national conferences. And so we did that in order to help him give those presentations. And I expect that we're going to get multiple recognitions and awards because it was a really complicated project, kind of a once-in-a-career type project, and it's going really well, on time, on budget.
I can't imagine what the environmental permitting would look like going under the river like that.
It was about four years in the making to get to construction.
Well, I want to open the floor up to Councilor, I know Councilor Breck, I'm going to go to you first because you're the Wes liaison for the city, so please.
And I do appreciate being the liaison with the advisory group. I'm very impressed with the planning and the execution that Wes does. You know, all of your documents, starting from, you know, physical things that need to be done, all the way through the financing. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Any other comments from this, from Councilor Bonnington, please?
I am going to take you up on that tour offer because this is the kind of stuff I nerd out on, which makes me wonder, is that video available online somewhere? Because it's really pretty good.
The last time I gave this talk, they said the same thing, and it wasn't. It may be by now, but if not, it will be soon.
Okay.
Thanks. Council President Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Greg, for all the work you do and your team also. I especially am interested in the outreach that your community education and outreach that you're doing because, of course, that is key to establishing justification for rate increases and other policy that council sometimes needs to discuss and having people understand where, what they're supporting and how important it is. I really appreciate all of the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also appreciate the sponsorships of our community events. I saw that at Music in the Park when I went this year. That's cool. City Manager, any final comments for Greg? We have a great partnership with Wes.
We do, and I think that's the key message. You've conveyed that today. We think of it as a partnership, and we'll continue to put out all our parts. So thanks for coming here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Apparently, our city attorney may be also interested in the tour, so if we could do it. Because it is pretty cool.
I'd even do another tour. That was, it was very cool to go over there and see the whole thing and get the tour from all the staff as well, so.
We will reach out.
Thank you, Greg, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will display the puzzle in the lunchroom or something of that sort. I do want to check, I think we, I see Councilor Groner is now on the phone. So Councilor Groner, can you test your, unmute yourself and just test your audio so we can hear you? I don't know if he can even hear us, but he's, it looks like he's calling into the meeting on his phone, so maybe he can unmute his mic on the, on this phone there.
I've sent him a request.
Okay. Thank you. I will, I'll text him as well. But we can move on on the agenda now as we work to get, make sure Councilor Groner is connected to the community tree ordinance and tree manual technical review.
Thank you, Mayor. We will introduce Megan Bigjohn and the team, Mike and Todd. And actually, it's been quite a team effort, as you'll hear from Megan, not just this department, not just the legal department, but other departments in the agency working to make this code function better for staff and, of course, primarily function better for our community members. So Megan, as a work session presentation, right now, we are scheduled to adopt this next week, but obviously, if council has changes or direction during the course of this meeting, we can push that out. So Megan, if you could start us off and introduce the topic and introduce your team, please.
Yes, thank you for having us here today. Todd Prager and Todd Prager Associates, who is our consulting arborist for the city, and Mike Perkins, who works with the Parks Recreation Department and is also our interim city arborist at the time, right now. Super thankful for these two for their support through this project. Just wanted to give you, I'm not going to go over all the details because you guys have seen it several times, but I definitely wanted to kind of give you an overview of what we're trying to do today and just doing the updates, technical updates, improvements to the code to make it clarified, more clarified for the community, more transparent, as well as a couple of policy updates that could be really beneficial to the community as well as our ability to approve tree permits. Also want to ensure that we're staying up to date with our state laws, make sure that the code is compliant, and at the end of the day, ultimately, to enhance public safety and minimize the risk for the city. I got one slide. Thank you so much, Teresa. So we were able to do some outreach with everybody, with a lot of the community, which was quite fun and interesting to see what feedback we did get. You've already seen a list of who we were able to speak to, but when we gave our presentation to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, as well as the Sustainability Advisory Board, they were very supportive of the work that we were doing. Didn't receive any questions or over technical feedback, which is great to hear. Also presented at the Neighborhood Association Presidents as well, and they, there was no general feedback, just happy with the work that we were doing, and there was some individual comments that came out of that. White Oaks Savannah, they presented it to all of their Neighborhood Association with a confirmed email, and we only received one comment back from them too. And then they presented at Bolton Neighborhood Association, where there's actually quite a bit of conversation of things that were greater than this that we'll be able to touch base on, which, again, it's always fun when you have community outreach, you get to find some new things. I wanted to share just the, literally the italicized comments or the actual comments we received. I paraphrased a few of them, but what it showed me was that we have some clarification with information that to be able to provide people, making sure our website is up to date, and then again, through the process. Some of these will be addressed and others will be in a larger, greater review of the code in the future. For example, with the Merrill Horse Neighborhood Association, somebody had asked, where we had recently, somebody who had illegally removed a tree, and mitigation trees were then replaced, but they are at one-and-a-half-inch caliber. So with the current code, in the future, those are not protected because they're under six inches or under 12 inches, depending on the species of the tree. And so that's something that we would earmark for future improvement from the CDC code portion of it, as well as the municipal code. Savannah Oaks, the question about why would you have to remove, need a permit to remove a dead stump? Of course, you do not, but that's something that needs to be clarified, that person did not receive the proper information. Bolton Neighborhoodization had quite a few different conversations, questions that I thought were great, asking if state laws were being, what updates specifically in the code were being updated. And I was wondering if Kaylee would be able to kind of paraphrase that, what that overview was with state laws.
Yeah, so we actually worked with our outside councilman, Barry Elsner, on this. It was a period where I was pretty busy, and I also had learned that Emily Guilmont there had actually worked on a tree code of another large city. So I was like, let's not duplicate efforts, let's use the knowledge she already has. And so she worked on it, and I don't expressly have the exact, you know, state law's name, but I know one of her directives from me was to make sure we're in compliance with any changes at the state level or county level that would apply to this code. So that's what she reviewed for, and also to help with clarity. You know, we want consistency, clear standards, and, you know, to be easy for a resident to use, but also for staff to execute on our side.
Thank you, Kaylee. Another question was, is, you know, how would we evaluate when we would assist for maintenance of heritage trees? And I realized through this that there wasn't an actual process. And so that's something that we'll be creating that isn't part of the code, but creating for potentially annual maintenance and at least looks of those trees, working with Todd and Mike to make sure that we're staying up to care on those. Those are very important trees for us. Another one was, will pruning standards for row be provided? Well, actually, I reached out to public, actually, Public Works reached out to me, hearing me ask the question today, and there actually is standards that are already created that we just, again, need to get that information to the public. And then ownership of trees on property lines for clarification that we work with code enforcement on, and there has to be a survey between, if there's a tree between two houses, and who the ownership is. And so another, again, we're looking at building a FAQ on our website for some of these questions that come up frequently. So be able to provide that information in a quick term, quick means, so. So that was the feedback I received. I wanted to see if you had any questions on that, and if you didn't, or if you do, we have a few more things to talk to you about that kind of came up as we were working through this. So would you like to ask any questions on the feedback we received or go into the heritage tree discussion we have for you?
You can, you may continue.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Well, through this, something that's very dynamic with our code is heritage trees. And it's really, we have 10 in the city currently. One is down at Marius Young, a beautiful white oak. And as we were going through this, John and I had asked Kaylee to do a legal review on what would that look like if we were to change the current code. And heritage trees, just to make sure you know what they are, they are a tree that's designated by city council with significant heritage and community value. They have, the criteria is scored with a point tally that comes through with the size, the location, condition, and then historical significance, and all of that criteria is already listed in the code. So when we're looking at it currently, the city owns the trees. And actually, I'll just pass it to Kaylee so you can go over that much clearer than I could. Is that okay?
Yeah, no problem. It was great working with Megan on this and Todd too. Thanks. It was a huge team effort. So about heritage trees, first, in our existing code, how it works, there is a nomination form, a City of Westland nomination form, to designate a heritage tree. And if it's on private property, which, as Megan alluded to, most of them are, nine of them are on private property, obviously, the property owner has to agree. And then it goes to city council for your review and approval. And so once a heritage tree is designated by the city council, can you hear this? Okay. The tree actually becomes an encumbrance on the property, and so it's listed as a deed restriction. And at that point, Parks and Rec, under existing code, is obligated to maintain the tree until it dies or the designation is removed by a vote of the council. And so part of this whole exercise in examining the tree code is, you know, where can we reduce risks to the city? Where can we also figure out a way to better use our limited Parks and Recreation budget? And so one of the question was, you know, should we, should the city really be responsible for maintaining trees on private property, especially ones that are huge and, you know, pretty expensive to maintain? I heard that one of them, there was some pruning done recently, and it's about $2,500. So if that's 10, suddenly you're at $25,000. And so we were talking about that in reviewing other heritage tree code in City of Portland and Tualatin, myself, and I'd like to give a shout out to my new honors attorney, Kristen James. She's helped me with this. We realized that most heritage trees on private property are maintained by the actual property owner. So Westland was different in that regard. And so the way our proposed changes in your packet that you have today are drafted, it shifts the responsibility on private property over to the property owner to maintain their own tree. But Megan and John's concern was, well, you know, are there any legal considerations or even just fairness considerations that when these original, when these owners originally applied, they were under the understanding, based in our code and based on the form, that the city would be maintaining that? So again, we looked at examples of other cities and potential legal doctrines that would apply. And at this point, our recommendation is that we essentially grandfather those ones in, so we continue to provide maintenance on the nine existing trees. But going forward, if you decide to adopt the proposed amendments next Monday, we would basically have a second bucket. So any heritage trees designated after the date of the changes, September 8th, they would be maintained by the private property owner, and that would be very clearly stated in this new heritage tree form that we're going to create. We're going to borrow from some of the other cities, some of that contractual language, and just make it very clear, and it would be clear in the code as well. I'm also considering proposing a revision. So this isn't in your packet, but this is where I'm going, so that current owners, the nine private property owners, could opt into that. So we thought about doing outreach and explaining. So we thought about doing outreach and explaining, you know, the benefits it does give current property owners the ability to control when it's pruned and in what way, and, and so there could potentially be some owners that are willing to take that on, and then we could shift them over into that bucket by having them fill out that, the new form that we create. So that is our fair, our recommendation to Megan, and what I think I will probably do, if that sounds good to you from a policy perspective, is I will, I will make these delineated changes in the version that you have, and it will be posted prior to the meeting on Monday. There is some other cleanup areas that I can address while I'm doing that. For example, in the packet that you have, in section three, it talks about, once they're designated, they get a plaque, and in that same paragraph, it rolls right into who's responsible for maintenance. So just kind of two different subjects lumped together. I think I would create another subsection four that says, you know, the responsibility for maintenance is, and then you'd have these subsections, like if it's on public property or right of way, it's the city, if it's privately owned, if it's on private property, it's the responsibility of the property owner, and then talk about ways for existing owners to get, get it shifted into this new process, if possible. There were some other kind of cleanup areas. I noticed that in the last section in your packet, it talks about how a heritage tree can be removed, the designation can be removed at a public hearing, but there aren't any criteria. So I talked to Megan about whether we would want to give some clarity to the public on that, and I think I will probably propose that criteria for you to consider includes, but is not limited to whether the heritage tree is dead, dying, or deemed a hazard. You know, we're thinking from a policy perspective, it shouldn't be as easy, you know, as just any tree you want to remove in your yard, it's a heritage tree after all, but give you flexibility to consider other things if you wanted to. And that will kind of, the dead disease, the dead, dying or deemed a hazard will roll into something Megan wants to talk about as well, but that is kind of where I am at this particular section. It was really the remaining section that needed to be teased out a little more, and so I wanted to get your feedback on whether that makes sense, what I just presented today, or whether you'd want to stick with your packet, which basically says, all heritage trees going forward need to be maintained by the property owner, regardless of whether they were designated in the past or going forward.
Any feedback from the council? On that topic?
Counselor Groner was trying to, he's, I was asking if he's going to unmute, he texted me a question, I was going to, he said, told me to ask it, so the question was, are any heritage trees on city property? He's having some technical issues, so I was.
Well, it sounds like there's one in Marius Young, which isn't technically city property, that's a state-owned park that we lease, but you might think of it as, you know, public area.
So the Marius Young one?
The Marius Young one.
And I, I looked back and I saw, the last time the city council designated one was in like 1997, and I've actually had a joke over the last couple of years, I got, we got to find a new heritage tree somewhere in the city, after the code amendments go in, not before. Counselor Bright, please.
I'm okay with the changes that you are proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I think they make sense, as long as the city manager is okay with giving up his almighty authority over the heritage trees in there, I saw that was struck out. Okay, Counselor, Counselor President, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also am okay with the proposed changes and amendments. I, I appreciate all of the work that this has, I mean, how long has this been, process been undertaken? A long time, so it's really great to see it finally in a form and moving forward, so thanks a lot.
Yes, agreed, appreciate all the work, and I think you have some more to present. This was, we're just, this was just the legal issue surrounding heritage trees.
Yes, correct.
And it sounds like there's a consensus on that, and I like the approach we're taking, allowing the current owners to kind of maintain their, their status with the city and maybe providing them an option to opt out, because I could see some might want to do that, they want more control over the tree. And so with that, we can move on to the, looks like Emerald Ash Borer and Mediterranean Oak Borer, we hope it never comes into Westland.
Exactly. If the code could help us with that, that'd be great. No, this is a quick, quick update, but one thing I'd like to add on the heritage tree, we may actually get more people applying because if we, with these code amendment changes, because right now, if your tree is deeded to the city, if you go to sell or have to do, you know, it really does tie your hand, so hopefully that this might be able to, we might be get more heritage trees coming in, so. So thank you, Kaylee, for all that research, and both of you did a great job. I just wanted to give you a heads up that we might be coming back to you with some minor changes as well, when it relates to Emerald Ash Borer, Mediterranean Oak Borer. Emerald Ash Borer has been found over in Oregon City, and so I am working, as well as Todd's, Todd and Mike, and Todd's staff is, we're keeping up to date with what's going on with state forestry, talking with state parks for Marius Young, and just trying to keep educated and apprised of what other agencies are doing for getting ready for that management. When it comes to Emerald Ash Borer, there is preventative maintenance you could be doing with some removals, and so there are cities around, I think Todd has worked with Milwaukee on that, as to where you would give allowances to removal of Emerald Ash Borer in a certain way and means, and then also describing how you would do the disposal of that. Same thing goes with Mediterranean Oak Borer, you don't usually do pre-removals on those, but just making sure that our code allows and our permits allow for people to do the corrective action that we needed to protect the rest of the trees around. So that is something that we'll be working on, and all getting continued educated and finding out what the new strategies are with that. So we'll be coming to you back with that at some point in time. And then with this process, we've been already working, updating our website, again, finding the things that people, information people couldn't find, updating our application, the amount of calls that we get to the front desk at Parks and Recreation about trees is a lot. So we're working with the front desk staff to find out what information they need to be able to help reduce those calls and be able to improve our application process. So that's all been in works. We've also been working with finance through CitizenServe to be able to get an online version as well of the application, which will streamline all of our process internally. So appreciate all of your time and listening to this, I think it's our third presentation, and thank you.
Any other questions on the topic of the tree update?
I know that some community members have talked about, kind of wanting more protections for trees in relation to the development review, and I think that's been determined to be kind of a separate process, so we still have to keep that on our radar, because it's been something we want to take up, I think, but it's just a matter of staffing and resources. So I don't know how that plays into everything, but just wanted to bring that up, because some might, watching might think this is more protection oriented for development, but it's not quite yet.
And Megan, I don't want to put you too much on the spot with that one, or John, but could you explain the two different processes and how they interlap, and, you know, maybe some of the problems that are created?
Oh, well, I had it until the last clause of your question, the interrelation. I think generally what we're talking about is, there've been a lot of community members interested in talking about how, how vacant lots are managed when new development comes in. So this is a subdivision or a single lot, what trees are required to be preserved, how does that all work? It's a little bit different, generally speaking, than the code that these folks are here talking about today, which applies more to, not entirely, but more to smaller scale projects, individual trees in many cases. There is some interrelation, I wouldn't say there's none, but I think the community members thinking about what you're talking about are really looking at clearing lots for new development, is that allowed? To what extent is that allowed? How do we oversee that?
Yes, I was just going to see if Todd can give a little bit of overview, because there is some interlot being between a large development that goes through a planning process, and then the sequential trees that they may want to take down come through the municipal code right now, and so part of this review is kind of discussing that, but a lot of that has to be done in the CDC code. Not if you want to explain further.
Yeah, I can weigh in on that. So I do a lot of consulting for cities throughout the region on tree code updates, and it's really important to keep a line as bright as possible between your development code and land use actions, and then non-development, people managing trees on their property for health or safety. So these amendments were really in technical nature, aimed at that kind of property owner management piece, but the land use aspect involves a lot more process, and there's state requirements that apply, so that's not something that we've gotten into, since this was more targeted towards the individual property owners.
And if we wanted to get into that, what would that require? Or if a city wanted to talk about the development side or the CDC side, that'd be kind of a separate work session discussion, probably, then you have funding requirements for consultants, I'm sure. Okay, well, we can continue to talk about it, we'll keep it on our radar, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know that it's come up so many times over the years, of people wanting trees preserved when there's development in the neighborhood, so.
Yep, and it is on the Planning Department's docket list, it just hasn't made it to the top of that list yet while we work on other priorities, but it's certainly there, and it is a larger project.
Anything else on trees? Mike, anything need to add, or, okay?
Nothing to add.
Thank you for being here, thanks for being our interim arborist, that's exciting, you're back in the role after a few years off. Well, seeing nothing else, we can move on on the agenda and thank our speakers, and thank you, Todd, as well, for your team's support, and Kaylee and Legal Department, what a collaboration this, this topic was. Onto adoption, so when will that, this come back for adoption, is that scheduled?
Monday night.
Okay.
Business meeting.
Monday night.
Similarly, we can welcome Erica, and the next item is sanitary sewer system development charge, also slated for council consideration next Monday night. I'm not sure who's coming up to the table, but Eric will be leading the presentation. This is an update to the methodology of the city's sanitary sewer SDC, and if you've looked ahead in the packet, you'll see there's actually a kind of unusual phenomenon here, a proposed significant cut in our sanitary sewer system development charge, and we'll be hearing the rationale for that. So Eric, please go ahead.
Welcome, Eric.
All right. Eric, councilors, thanks for having us today, here today to talk about, as John mentioned, sewer SDC fees. I have Doug Gabbert here, along with his team, that are online from FCS, and so I'm, he's going to do the, Doug's going to do the heavy lifting, I'm just going to do a quick introduction of kind of how we're here today. So SDCs or system development charges are one-time charges paid at the time of new development or redevelopment, and account for expanded demand on the city's infrastructure. Periodically, the city contracts with financial consultants, which specialize in SDC calculations and methodology research to update its fees. One of those times would be the time of master plan updates. Our sewer master plan was most recently updated in 2013, and at that time, thought to leave the fees alone, and so we did, fast forward a few years, middle housing started coming in, and engineering, it's kind of stuck as far as how to proceed with those sewer SDC charges. So we reached out to Doug's team at FCS, and he proceeded with a sewer SDC update. So with that, I can let you take it over, Doug, and the rest of my notes were pretty much probably what you're going to touch on anyway, so.
Fantastic. I want to make sure that I've got. Oh, oh, okay, fair enough. Well, hello, council, I'm Doug Gabbert with FCS. I am joined online by Project Principal John Gilarducci and my senior analyst, Luke Nelson. It's been a while since I've chatted with you, a long time, and when we did last get together, it was about transportation system development charges, and likewise, those moved lower as well. So there is, there is precedent for what we're going to be talking about today. Our agenda today is, we're going to ease into what is an SDC, both for you and for the wider audience, we'll explain what those are and how they contrast with rates. We'll talk about the statutory basis and how, in a, in a big picture sense, we calculate SDCs. We'll talk about your specific results for the sewer collection system, and then we'll show you some comparisons, because I know you love to see those. Next slide. So SDCs are one-time charges, as Eric said, they are not ongoing rates, nobody gets a monthly bill for system development charges. In Oregon, you can charge SDCs for up to five different services, water, sewer, stormwater, parks, and transportation. Other states have their lists, this is Oregon's. SDCs are for capital only, both in the way that you calculate them and in the way that you spend them. Don't spend SDCs on operating expenses. SDCs can, and in your case do, include both existing and future assets in, as cost components, and we'll talk more about that. SDCs are for system facilities, not local facilities. In other words, you wouldn't charge an SDC just for a facility that will be, that will benefit two or three properties, you might use an LID or something different. An SDC really buys you kind of a share of stock in the whole utility system. So looking at the law is something that we're very familiar with on the next slide. So we help, we, we're going to keep you on the right side of this, Oregon, ORs, Chapter 223, starting in 297. The, the real meat of the law, as far as how we calculate it, is in Section 304. Section 316 is, is relatively new, it's only a couple of years old, I think, that requires all local governments that have websites to make sure you put all of your SDC information on that website, so that you are nice and transparent like they want you to be. Locally, the City of Westlin, in their, in your municipal code, Chapter 4.400, that is the local ordinance that governs SDCs, and everybody who charges SDCs has to have such an ordinance. So let's talk about the SDC calculation on the next slide. From a real basic 30,000 feet, there are two layers potentially to an SDC. One is called the reimbursement fee, and the other is called the improvement fee. The reimbursement fee is the portion of the SDC that is based on existing assets to the extent that those assets have available capacity for future users. You total up the cost of that available capacity, you divide it by the growth in system demand, and that's your reimbursement fee. The improvement fee is what people mainly think about, as traditionally what they think about when, when thinking about SDCs, is based upon a project list. It's planned projects, you look at the whole project list, and you determine to what extent does each of those projects contribute to the capacity that future users will use. And you divide that also by the growth in system demand, that is your improvement fee, and you can combine those two fees for your total system development charge. Well, as we begin to drill down on the math, we're going to look specifically at that growth in system demand first on the next slide. So using data provided by the city, we, we know that you have 13,974 meter capacity equivalents currently. What's a meter capacity equivalent, you ask? Well, that is the hydraulic flow allowed by the base meter, in your case, that's a 5/8 inch meter, and as meter sizes get larger, you can put more water through them, and so that factor is multiplied by the factor that gets you to that hydraulic capability. So you add up all of those meter capacity equivalents, and you have almost 14,000 now. Your collection master plan has existing peak wet weather flow of 20.17 MGD, million gallons per day, and at buildout, that will be all the way up to 23.68 million gallons per day. If we inflate the meter capacity equivalents at the same rate, in other words, in the same proportion, then you will reach 16,406 MCEs by buildup, which is growth of 2,432 MCEs, and that is the number that will serve as the denominator of the calculation. Now, let's go to the numerator specifically of the improvement fee. This is your, this is your collection system project list. So for each of these projects, there is a total cost, there is an incremental capacity, and there is the eligible cost, which is just the product of the previous two numbers. The incremental capacity, that's kind of the special sauce of doing SDCs, we have to figure out. We have to figure out what portion of each project will be available to future users. And there's there's a couple of considerations we have in the project description for each project. It will tell us whether there is some deficiency that's being cured or not. That's one piece of information. But most of these projects, you'll notice most of these are pipe projects. And the vast majority of them are replacing existing pipe with larger pipe. So when you replace a small pipe with a large pipe, some of that capacity in the large pipe was already there in the smaller pipe. So it's our job to figure out what is the incremental capacity being provided by the large pipe. And that is what those percentages represent. Now, there are some, there's, there's one project that is absolutely new for new capacity. That's the force main project. And that's why it's at 100%. Some projects are more programmatic or replacement like for like and don't add any capacity at all. And those are the 0% projects. And so after all of those percentages that are taken into consideration, you have a project list that starts at a total cost of $35.7 million. And it whittles down to about $3.6 million of eligible cost that you can put into an SDC. That's your improvement fee cost basis. Let's talk about reimbursement fee cost basis on the next slide. Now ideally, when we're when we're trying to cost out existing assets to be included in SDC, we want we want a master plan to tell us, oh, in in pumping capacity, you need this much capacity, but you have this much more capacity. And so we can allocate that this much more part to future users. And we didn't have that as much as we would like. A lot of master plans don't document that kind of excess capacity very well. But we do have another trick. We noticed that you have a lot of recent SDC expenditures on sewer collection infrastructure. And it is reasonable for us to assume that the capacity created by those SDC expenditures, which must be capacity related. It's reasonable to assume that that new capacity is not absorbed right away. So you'll notice that that we have the SDC expenditures for sewer collection in that second column. In the third column, we're making an adjustment because we can't always tell if you're spending improvement fee or reimbursement fee. And we're really just trying to capture improvement fee expenditures. And then that second to last column, you see that the older the project is, the less remaining capacity we would expect to have. And so the more recent, the more capacity. And so that brings us down to a total reimbursement fee cost basis of about $401,000 based upon that method of analyzing, not nearly as much as the project list, but but it's something that can defensively be included. So let's start putting these numbers together on the next slide. So from a total project list of $35.7 million, we have, as you saw a couple of slides ago, eligible project cost of about $3.6 million. From that, we have to deduct in the improvement fee fund balance of about $1.5 million representing improvement fee monies that you've already collected, but the projects are still on the list. So those are projects are still counted in the project cost. So we have to adjust out the the fund balance. The reimbursement fee cost basis of almost $401,000 is then added. And we also add a provision for compliance costs. What that means is it's kind of a it's kind of a sort of exception to the to what I told you about not spending SDCs on operating costs. You are allowed to spend SDCs on the cost of complying with SDC law, which is things like paying consultants that help you with your SDC methodology. So we've provided a provision for that and over the forecast period, which is long, it's about $145,000 for a total cost basis of $2.66 million. We then divide that by the growth in MCEs that we saw earlier. And that brings you down to the bottom line of $1,094 total SDC per meter capacity equivalent. If we then pump that through your fee schedule on the next slide, including not only the the SDCs based upon meter size that you've always had, but also on the middle housing that we developed recently for you. You can calculate that SDC for all of those. And you notice that it is a reduction from what you're currently charging. Finally, let's look at some comparisons on the on the next slide. So you're you're going, you're going a little bit down, a little bit, it's not a competition, so that's okay. But you're a lot of, a lot of cities charge more than West Lynn. And so we want to leave you with the thought on the final slide that we want you to continue your current practice of indexing your SDCs. This is and sometimes remembering that the index goes down as well as up sometimes. And we would encourage you to continue to follow that even if it goes down. Remembering that the indexing is not about getting more revenue, it's about hedging price risk. And so that's a good practice to make sure that the buying power of your SDC still remains what you expected to be. That's been a lot of words. I'm going to stop and see if you have any questions.
Well, thank you for the detailed presentation. We can, we know you're the expert on this area. And I just want to open the floor up to council. I know people are probably still processing information. I just want to ask, what's the forecast period for your this? You mentioned the forecast periods, just like looking 20 years out, 30 years out.
Right. So so for for everything except the compliance fee, we we had to, we had to guess. And while I'm saying this, Luke, if you would take a look at the the appliance fee calculation to see what that guess turned out to be. But for everything except that part, there is no fixed forecast period. It's based on build out.
And then?
Which is a condition, not a time.
And then so for like build out, are you using the city limits as like the or are you using like a buildable, a certain amount of acreage that's undeveloped? How are you, how are you calculating that?
Using the definition that was in your master plan. That's a nice word to put to it like that. You want to chime in on the compliance fee horizon?
Yeah, so the timeline for the compliance fee that we use was 20 years.
20 years, which is a typical.
And my, my, the reason I'm asking my comments is just where this is showing a significant reduction in the fee. I don't know what the percentage is, 80% maybe from 5,000 pretty much to 1,000. And that's based on this current, our current city conditions. But 20 years from now, you know, conditions in the city for regard to growth could change. And then I don't want the city to be completely stuck, you know, if if there's opportunity for future growth. We're talking about the Stafford area in particular, not anytime soon for folks listening. But looking way out down the line, how do we maintain the flexibility to for future cities to be able to like make sure that we're not stuck charging this really low SDC when we want to, if if there's future growth in 20 years? That's my question, why I'm bringing it up.
You don't have to wait 20 years to think about this again. We often get the question, how often should we think about SDCs and recalculate them? Certainly, whenever you do a master plan is the most opportune time. But in general, every five years or so is a good time to rethink it.
Okay, so it's an ongoing.
So mayor, I would think also if the city undertook significant rezoning that could have huge capacity implications or if there were UGB expansions which are not contemplated. Any of those times might be an opportunity to revisit our infrastructure plans. In fact, I don't think we would contemplate significant upzonings or expansions without looking at our infrastructure plans to make sure that we could serve it. So state law makes us connect all of these things so that we can't just be charging for a thing that we might do someday. We really have to have it planned. So if we were to change the zoning, change the comp plan, create an infrastructure plan to serve it, then we would look at the SDCs. And it's true that we would not have been capturing funds for that all the time. But on the other hand, we would not have been planning to do it all of that time. Is that a fair way of describing it?
That's perfect.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you jumping in. I just am looking out for 10, 20 year, 30 year horizon and making sure we're not stuck with this load number.
Reasonable question because we actually are doing some pretty ambitious planning right now. And it may lead to implications or it may just be that the existing sewer infrastructure in these areas is going to be just fine.
And you're talking about waterfront and Vision 43, the Stafford area, when you talk about ambitious planning. That's just, it's important thing to ask and clarify. Council, Bryce, please.
Do we have an idea, this is probably more a question for Eric, do we have an idea of when a new sewer master plan will be initiated?
We don't have it in the works right now. You know, we went 20 years prior. So I'm hoping somewhere in the five to 10 years, you know, like I said, we last one was adopted in 19. So it's already 25. So probably in the next five years.
There's another piece to this that I think I want to make sure that council is considering is that this is really about the increases to the service capacity. This doesn't mean we don't have a huge problem with replacing existing sewer lines. And all of the maintenance that has to be done, right? None of that is SDC work that we do. So I don't want the, I don't want the average viewer to come away with the impression that our sewer system is amazing. It is amazing, but that it has no needs, right? This is just about the increases to size and capacity. We still have sewer lines all over the city that need to be upgraded, that we need to reduce infill and infiltration. All of that not addressed in in this plan. That would be more of our rates setting.
Great, important point. Thank you, city manager. Any anything else? Council president, please.
Thank you, mayor. I a couple or one slide back, maybe there was one that had, yeah, rate comparisons. Now, I'm just to kind of help me understand generally, I love the opportunity to learn about all these different areas of life that I had never really spent much time thinking about. But for Troutdale, for instance, a community like Troutdale, why would they be so much higher than? I mean, just generally speaking, why would it, why would there be such such discrepancy?
They can be very idiosyncratic. I'm not sure I can give you.
Okay, okay, maybe not.
Before we leave that, John, is there anything you want to add on Troutdale?
Or Astoria?
No, I can't really. Astoria is a very unique situation because they're doing a combined sewer separation between stormwater and wastewater and stormwater ended up, they they assigned most of the costs to stormwater. So the wastewater SDC is extremely low, the stormwater SDC is extremely high just because of the way they they allocated that project cost. But we did the most recent update on Troutdale and for the life of me, I can't remember what specifically drove that system development charge, except to say, you know, everybody's needs are so different. It's it's difficult. That's an older, an older city with perhaps more infrastructure needs and a growing city. So, yeah, but I'm speculating. I'll see what I can find out.
Council president, I think the idiosyncratic is the right word. It really depends where a city is in its life cycle of expanding its system. Troutdale may have undersized pipes that all need to be increased to handle capacity. They may have big new growth areas. They may have costs related to treatment. You know, there's a lot of different things that could go into that. And especially if a community is rapidly growing or is planning to rapidly grow, they would likely have. And so it connects back to Mayor Bielski's question. West Lynn doesn't have, you know, we're mostly within our existing footprint. And it appears that we mostly have the ability to accommodate what we have in town right now. If we were not in that situation, if we were contemplating growing, if we're contemplating big new influxes of wastewater, we would need to be charging a lot more money in order to be building the infrastructure to handle it. So it really does vary ultimately in a city that has no growth planned where you're entirely built out. You would have no SDC ultimately, right?
Thank you.
Good questions and discussion, everybody. And I assume that the staff are okay with this recommend, this recommendation for fees. You know, it's interesting to see us reducing fees so much, but.
It's unusual. We like to do that when we can. It's, I think it's just a sign of good financial management. This is what we're following state law. We're doing the work required. We're creating the system plans, hiring professionals to review them and and delivering our ratepayers the best, the best possible rate in compliance with state law. And yes, things do not get to you without going through me and Kaylee. So we are, we are definitely in agreement with the recommendation here.
I'm happy about it and maybe the cost of housing will come down a little bit too. Who knows? Anything else on the topic of the SDC update? Seeing no other comments, so that'll be for adoption on Monday, correct? Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Eric, any closing comments?
I know John, John answered it there for me, I think. I was just going to use Caligro Pump Station is an example on that list of projects that showed eligibility. And we just completed that around 1.5 million and it was 0% eligible. So unfortunately, our sewer system has been a lot of deferred maintenance over the years. I don't want to say neglected because we've still maintained it. But there are a lot of projects on that list that are eligible as far as pipe replacement, sewer force main from Mapleton, some work at Mapleton. None of that is kind of deemed critical as far as moving ahead with the master plan projects. We don't have those on the CIP list as of the, as of yet. Planning an I and I project this next year. But as far as that, our sewer system is in great shape. It's just, you know, it needs, needs a little TLC here and there and get back on some of these improvement projects. But my point is, a lot of these projects that we do unfortunately aren't eligible for SDCs. So as John pointed out, I think it's it's unfortunate to have less fees, obviously, but it's the right thing to do. So.
Thank you. Well, we will see you back next Monday night.
All right, thank you.
And moving right along, we have the next item on the agenda is the next steps on the city general fund budget needs and opportunities discussion following up after the August time off that the council had, although it wasn't really, we just weren't meeting. We were still doing all of our city work. So Mr. Williams, do you have, would you like to lead this discussion? Do you have a nice memo and a nice potential proposal there with some consultants to help facilitate?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I'd be happy to. This was back in May and June with the Budget Committee and the City Council meeting and talking about the next biennial budget. There was a conversation about all the things that we were not able to fund in that budget. And I think it's safe to say the council and the Budget Committee were both interested in talking about ways that cities can enhance the services they provide or at least have that conversation with the community. So in July, at your July 7th meeting, we put together a list, an initial list of some of the items, projects, personnel that either city staff think are needed or wanted by the community or that we have heard directly from community members or council that would be valuable to the community. We put together that list and over the subsequent couple of months, there's been conversation about where should we go next? And we've talked once or twice at council meetings. And I think I came to the conclusion and discussed with the mayor, there's a lot of moving parts here. So when you're thinking about all the possible things that we have talked about in the last year and a half in this room that this community wants to fund, ranging from a recreation center to an operation center to basic drinking water infrastructure, to pedestrian and bike safety projects, to enhance police patrol, to natural areas maintenance, there's, there's a lot of different places. And each of those comes with possible funding sources, but also each of those has different advantages, disadvantages, different timelines, different limitations. And so there's quite a lot to this. And I started feeling like we're never going to solve this one unless we actually dedicate some time and spend some concentrated time as a council, providing direction, talking to, for you to talk to each other about all these different priorities and where you'd like to go and how you'd like to do it. So my recommendation to you is rather than doing it half an hour, 45 minutes at a time, once or twice a month, that you actually dedicate. that you actually dedicate a nice chunk of time. My proposal is an afternoon work session later this month, sort of retreat style, but facilitated by a professional who can help you with strategic planning, help you identify some direction, help think about community conversation that might go with this. That would allow you to be assisted by someone who, who does this work and for all of us as staff to support you in the conversation without having, for example, for me to do the facilitation and also answer questions and all those pieces. And I'm smart enough to know that there are people who are much better at doing that kind of work than I am. So that's my recommendation. We have a consultant in mind who is available to work with you, who has worked with a number of other cities in our region and for a pretty small, pretty, a pretty efficient contract. She can do a little bit of pre-work, looking at all of our needs, having some initial conversations with some key people and helping you with a dedicated meeting. So that is my proposal to you. It is entirely your piece of work, entirely up to your, up to your preferences. So that is my suggestion that we start working on this in September. So set a date for it and have a public facing conversation and, and start laying these things out on the table to make a plan. But as I say, it's entirely your, your piece of work. And we're happy to support you in any way that you would like to move this conversation forward. And so we put it on the agenda for this bit of conversation. And we are happy to, to assist you in getting where you would like to go. That's, I think, actually, I think if I had read my staff report verbatim, it would have been shorter than what I just said. So I probably should have done that in the end. But live and learn. But that is my, that is my recommendation to you.
It's okay. We're ahead of schedule. So you can have as much extra time as you need.
I could do it again if you'd like.
Well, and Counselor Groner is still there. I think, I'm sure he's excited to be part of the conversation. He's at the airport getting ready for his flight. So he's just been listening in and having some technical difficulties with his mic. We'll get his thoughts when he's able to share. And Counsel, how do you, how are you feeling about the proposal from City Manager? Counselor Bonington, please.
I am a big fan of that idea. I think that's great. It's probably best that we start the conversation by having two parts where we're figuring out what the needs are as we've started to work through, but also keeping in mind that it probably is not a one solution problem. That's a long time in the making with a lot of moving parts. So looking at all the comprehensive pictures of the, the funding situation and, and what revenue sources might be out there that we haven't explored at the same time feels equally important to me as the needs. So that and getting, getting a direction going and then hearing from the public about what they perceive the needs of the city are. Feel like important priorities with this to me.
Thank you for that agreed. I'm seeing nods from Counselor President and Counselor Bright. So I think that makes sense. We'll work to schedule that meeting and get that consultant on board. And I mean, we all bring different values, ideas and things to the discussion. And it is hard to have the conversation in a staggered manner over several meetings. So I think we have a really good groundwork laid here to, to start the conversation, really continue the conversation with a, at a dedicated meeting. And then we'll have, take from that, we can seek public input. And I'll also, of course, be able to watch and attend that public meeting. So I saw some, I think we have a consensus on that. So we'll work, we'll start to plan that.
Fantastic. And I just asked, any of you that have thoughts or ideas for how that session should look, feel? Please get in touch with me and we'll, we'll be working on the details, looking at maybe that two weeks out. If I have that count, three weeks out to do that work. So we will get that scheduled. And I appreciate your attention to this. I, I very much appreciate your willingness to talk about this, not the easiest, not the simplest, not the safest conversation to have, but very, very important and really, really essential to the health of our community. So we're, we're all looking forward to the conversation.
I think it's our, it's our duty to, to take on these conversations on the city's staffing and capital needs. So, and I think we all agree on that. That's why we're here. So while leading, this leads wonderfully into the City Manager Report, so.
Perfect. I will just keep going. And 3:05, I won't take it till 3:05. Just a couple of notes under City Manager Report. One is I'd like to take particular note of the artist in here this month. Marlena Stoddard Hayes was a Westland resident. She passed away in January of this year. And I think these works really fill the room really nicely and complement our color scheme. They're, they're beautiful. And sadly, Marlena passed, passed away before she could see this here. Her family wanted to see this shared in this room. And I was just rereading the piece on the wall that I encourage you all to do. She, the family wanted this art shared in her memory and encourage you to take time to appreciate life's mystery and the beauty all around us. I think that is a smart lesson for all of us. But apparently Marlena lived down near the Willamette River here in Westland. And we are sorry to hear of her passing. On the, now back to the more functional stuff. The next meeting, September 8th, is your business meeting. We'll be back on Monday as currently scheduled. And at that meeting, we have a couple more Community Advisory Group work plans scheduled for approval. We have the adoption pieces for both the tree code and the sewer SDC that we reviewed today. Thank you for your attention to those. And then at the request of the mayor, we've scheduled a discussion of next steps on the Oppenlander property. And it's my understanding, and we're already working on inviting people that are interested in that conversation to be part of the conversation with you on the 8th. So that's, that's all I have, I think, at that meeting. On the 15th, we'll have another work session. This will be the evening work session. And we will have some planning related items. And we will have probably an Oregon legislative update from Doug Riggs. And then still ticking through those things that are outstanding on the list of assignments and, and next steps that we capture these, we will have the Lady Bee tugboat agreement back for consideration by council. Kaylee and Megan and I have been working with the advocates on a draft of an agreement that sort of reflects their interests, the advocates' interest in preserving the lady bee, but also our interests in protecting the city financially and, and from, from a legal perspective. So we will have a draft agreement to look at, at that meeting of the work session. And we'll be on to October. A couple more things. We picked up one additional follow-up today. We had two members of the public talking about golf courts. Golf carts, we are already researching law on golf carts. I look forward to getting smarter because it's my understanding that cities actually cannot permit golf carts unless there's a golf course. But we're working on that to review the Oregon state law. And we will certainly report back to council as you requested us to. The last thing I wanted to cover is I was just looking at the city calendar. Eric's still in the room. Eric, you don't have to come up, but there is a lot of work happening all over the city, construction work. The water project and the annual road program are both happening. Eric, if you want to have anything to say about those, you could, please. Also, I drove down 43 the other day and noticed that the one side now of the project at Merrillhurst is, you can see the form now, if you've been down there and you can see what that intersection, it's just one intersection, but it sort of shows you what the ultimate buildout of the 43 plan could look like, 300 feet down and three miles to build. So we're still working on the funding for the rest of that. Eric, anything on the road or water?
Just backing up one other thing for the 15th work session. We talked about bringing a update on the operations building. Basically, we've, we're into our third week of five, five groups, bioengineering. Now that we have our contractor on board trying to shrink the cost just a bit. So we wanted to bring that update before you as soon as we could. Yeah, project wise, we're trying to wrap up the waterline projects. All the waterlines are installed. We have a few tie-ins to do yet. Got some paving done on upper mid-hill as part of that. Our road program is kicking off this week. The contractor is mobilizing in. So you should see some paving around town, mainly up here on top of the hill. Plan is to start on Rosemont from Shannon Lane down to Summit. And then there's some work at the intersection on Santa Anita and then I think jump over to Hidden Springs. So hopefully get all that done while we still have dry weather. And then as John talked about, the ODOT project down on Merrillhurst and 43, so that's ongoing. Not a lot to report as far as the, kind of the partnership with the school district down on Athie Creek. If you didn't know, we were still at the punch list stage with the road work when, when the school district had to let their general contractor go. So we'd been in limbo, thought we had the surety company on board with the school district to, to take over and hire a contractor to finish up some punch list stuff. But unfortunately, it looks like we lost our, our window, hoping to get a lot of that work done before school started this year. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. It's unfortunate, but out of our hands. Yeah, and we're just trying to move ahead and plan for the next project. As I mentioned, looking at, trying to do some sewer projects. The maintenance guys are doing a great job, doing a lot of work themselves. Water crew just installed 500 feet of new water main in preparation for a shutdown with the ODOT bridge. So they're doing great. So yeah, just trying to do the little stormwater projects and stuff in-house as we can. But yeah, lots, lots of stuff happening.
Lots happening to wrap up the warm weather construction season.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Eric. I don't know why this reminded me. We were, we had a team meeting this morning and we, Megan's announcement was they're all working on the winter holiday events. And we were like, whoa, what happened to Halloween? And she said, oh, Halloween's already planned. So they're, they're done with the summer. They moved on to the winter. So lots happening in every department. The one thing on the city calendar that if you haven't seen this, the, have you heard of the Library Chef program? New program that Westland opted into with your library card. You get cooking lessons, you get online videos, you get all sorts of cool stuff. Library Chef, check it out at the city's website. So.
Just, I saw that on the library website yesterday. Pretty cool.
I know I say this every time we meet, but every time, every time I meet, I'm looking at the library schedule of offerings and like, oh, I didn't know we did that. So that's a, that's a good new one. That is all I have for you. Thank you. And I hope you all had a wonderful Labor Day and we will see you next Monday night.
Thank you very much for that, City Manager. Counselor President, please.
I just wanted to bring up the meeting night potential change and see when and if we need to be addressing that for the mayor's schedule. Like if we're meeting next Monday, is that a problem?
Well, I can continue to meet on Monday nights for a short period of time. I would prefer to meet on Tuesday nights, as we've discussed. But because of the fact that like notices have gone out and the agenda is already planned, I wasn't going to make that something for next Monday. And then I don't know what, this is, I guess this is a good time to discuss the issue. So I've.
I don't want to, I mean, I didn't mean to enter into a whole new topic, but I just wanted to make sure we were addressing that in the time that it needs to be addressed.
I can, I will still be available next, next Monday night. And perhaps we can, I'll have, I'll talk to the City Manager about the process for actually finalizing or a change and getting some notification out to the groups that are, would be meeting on the same night as City Council with some options or feedback opportunities. So with that, anything else? Kaylee, you kind of introduced Kristin earlier, but I wanted to give you the opportunity. We don't have a city attorney report on the agenda anymore for obvious reasons, but the attorney-client privilege. But please, if you'd like to say any words about our new honors attorney.
Oh, yeah. Well, I thought I might introduce her at the, at the business meeting, but we can do two times. So Kristin started last week, Kristin James. We have her in the gallery here. She has been absolutely fantastic. We've only worked together for, what is that, six days now? But it's wonderful to be a department of two and to have such a talented person to bounce ideas off of and thoughts and also to figure out how to delegate, divide and delegate our work. So I'm really looking forward to what this next year can bring with Kristin on board. And maybe I'll have her introduce herself and tell a little bit more about her background at the next meeting. So she has a minute to think about that.
Sounds great. Thank you. Welcome, Kristin. We're glad you're here. And you're no longer going at it alone as a department of one. That's awesome. So. Anything else for the good of the order tonight or this afternoon? Seeing nothing else, Counselor Groner, safe travels home and we'll talk to you all soon. See you next Monday. We're adjourned.